It's six o'clock. Good evening. I'm David Assad, the chairman of the zoning board of appeals for the city of Fall River. It's 6:00 PM on Thursday, March 17th, 2022. We are meeting at one government center in the first floor hearing room. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, Subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Fall River Government TV, Michael Ferreira, is recording both the video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. Our recording secretary this evening is Christine Alex, the lady to my right. Present this evening are permanent members, John Frank from left to right, John Frank, he's the clerk of the zoning board of appeals, James Corkin, Dan Dupaire, Joe Pereira, who's the vice chairman and ultimate member Ricky Sahady. Also in attendance is the director of planning for the city of Fall River, Caitlin Young, the lady to my extreme left. Christine, have all petitions to be considered and properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the zoning board of appeals and Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A is amended?
Yes, sir.
I declare the March 17th, 2022 regularly scheduled meeting of the zoning board of appeals of the city of Fall River, open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the board, including the petitioners or butters, anyone in support or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the chairman. The board's rules and regulations direct the board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this board is the zoning board of appeals. This board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the city of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the zoning board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after a decision of the board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance, 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the city clerk's office or from the planning department. I remind everyone that the building inspector is the zoning enforcement authority, and you are here this evening because the building inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the city of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The city charter, Section 9-18, mandates that all multiple-member member bodies develop and adopt rules or policy for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizen input on zoning board specific matters at the end of the meeting. There's a, well, there was a, there was a sign-up sheet in the back if anybody wants to talk, we'll get to it at the end of the meeting. I disclose that an official copy of the Fall River zoning ordinance is available at the city clerk's office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. Are there any questions before we begin? Hearing none. All business, 01, Stanley Street Treatment and Resource, Inc., DBA Star, care of attorney Richard E. Burke, Jr., 75 Weaver Street, Lot T310. The board received an email communication from attorney Burke on March 15th, 2022, requesting that this matter be tabled until our April 21st meeting because he has submitted additional information to the building inspector for his consideration. So if we're going to allow that to happen, can I get a motion to table Agenda Item 01 to the April 21st meeting?
Sure.
Second?
I'll second.
Who was that? Dan? Dan, second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkin?
Yes.
Dan Dupaire?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes. Okay, so that one will be tabled to the April 21st meeting. Agenda item, new business, Agenda Item Number 1, R&amp;R Consulting Services, Inc., care of attorney Mark Levin, 423-425 Division Street, Lot G446. This is a special permit request pursuant to Section 86-423B to divide the property into two lots, one lot containing a three-family dwelling and a second lot containing a three-family dwelling. Good evening, Attorney Levin. Will you identify yourself for the record and tell us what you'd like to do?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, welcome Ms. Young and hi, Christine Alex. My name is attorney Mark L. Levin, 138 Rock Street, Fall River, Massachusetts. I'm an attorney this evening representing R&amp;R Consulting Services, INC. The project before you in the quest for a special permit is the typical Fall River generation of properties built in the early, late 1900s, early 20th century, where you have one lot that had multiple buildings on there. Based on the bylaws, Section 86-423, Section, Subsection B, I am submitting to you that these properties have been in existence prior to zoning, they've been continually used, and that, for your consideration, there really is no change to this property that'll occur other than creating new lot line. There will be a small easement for a right-of-way from the house in the front to get the access to the back. That's where currently access is. The garage that's in the front has been used by the owners or tenants that live in the back house. There was never any parking for the house in the front, right on the front of the street. So basically, we're just partitioning the line, giving an easement for access to the back for foot traffic. The current rear house will still have the access for the garage and use for their parking. So other than that, we're not changing anything. It's not going to be any more burdensome to the neighborhood by granting the special permit than it would be if you left it alone. It's still the same three units on each property, it's just separating it. The back property will have a bigger yard for their use, but with the front property, it's a smaller, they're small, very small units, I'm told, inside there, like one bedroom or something. So they, they really don't need a lot of access, and I'm told that currently, the population's a little bit older, so it's not a lot of car traffic from this property. And that's about it?
Mark, you say the six-foot easement proposed, six-foot wide access easement, so lot number one can get around or lot number two?
Lot number two can go through the lot number one's property.
By foot traffic only?
By foot traffic only, because the garage is right in front.
Well, that's my next question. The garage, that the proposed lot line along the face of the garage, that six-foot easement isn't just located in the rear, it's the full width?
It's the full width.
So if any work needs to be done on the garage, they'll have the easement to use that?
That's correct.
So if the board grants it, there should be, we should probably, any deed, a condition may be that any deed contain the crosses or the easements for that?
That's what's intended.
Yeah. Also, permanent, permanent boundary reference markers for the survey, for any surveys must be in place to take care of any corners or, yeah, so that, I would recommend that that be one of the conditions, that standard language that we use.
That's fine.
At any point. Any discussion about fences? No? Okay. So that's, those are my only concerns. Let me see if the board has any questions? No? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Can I get a motion to grant? Can I get a motion to deny?
Make a motion to grant.
Okay, motion to grant. John Frank?
Second.
Any conditions, any conditions on that, John?
Yes, with the previous stated easement be recorded on the deed, no fences in between the, on the property line.
No fences and permanent boundary reference markers?
Separate utilities. That's part of the deal, yeah. Permanent markers plus separate utilities will be...
With an affidavit to be recorded?
Will be required.
Within one year or before the conveyance is made? Okay. All right, so that's John Frank's motion with those conditions. I think the second was Joe Pereira. All right, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkin?
Yes.
Dan Dupaire?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes. Okay, that petition is granted with those conditions. Agenda Item Number 2, R&amp;R Consulting Services, Inc., care of attorney Mark Levin, 34 to 36 and 40, Hawk Street, Lot G611. This is a special permit request pursuant to Section 86-423B to divide the property into two lots, one containing a three-family dwelling and a second lot containing a five-family dwelling.
Again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and planner and clerk, Mark Levin, 138 Lock Street, Fall River, Massachusetts, and you turn it again for R&amp;R Consulting Services, Inc. This is almost duplicate what you just saw. These are pre-existing buildings, again, built at the end of the 1800s, beginning of the 20th century. They've existed on the property perpetual from that time before zoning, and again, they are just dividing up the lot so that they have separate ownership interest. The, as you can see for lot number two, there is a driveway. That lot is the, the bigger house has always stacked their cars behind each other as they have availability to use to get into the lot. There is a little yard that's left with number one, lot number one, and the rest of it is yard for lot number two. It's not much different. Again, the use of the property isn't going to change. The impact on the neighborhood will not change, there'll still be the same multifamily units on the property, and I have no problem with the same stipulations for the last conditions with the boundary markers, easements, well, actually, this one has an easement, and the separate utilities with an affidavit in the year. Thank you.
It's not going to be necessary for an easement?
No, the, the lot two has a, has the driveway that they'll have access directly by. It's, it's almost 14 feet wide. That's what they use now currently to...
I was thinking more for lot one.
Oh, lot, yeah, lot one's not going to need anything. It has full frontage on its own, and, yeah, it can get to the back of the property and has a little bit of land in between the building and its boundary. You know, that may be something that we'll add in the deed once it's created.
Well, that's my question.
1.5.
Yeah.
I mean, if they need to get around the back of the property to do work on the property, they would need a legal easement to be able to bring a man lift back there or painters with scaffolding, et cetera.
I, I agree. That makes sense, and I'm, that could be a stipulation, I'm going to tell my client to let, we're adding that even though it wasn't on the plan.
Yeah, that, that's correct. That was my concern.
Yep, that makes a lot of sense. No question at all.
But, okay.
They'll use the, we'll, we'll just cross-easement over the driveway access to get to the back.
Cross-easement, no fences?
No fences.
Separate utilities, boundary markers. Okay. Anything else, members of the board? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay. Motion to grant, motion to deny? Is that plan sufficient for everyone to work with?
I'll make a motion to grant with the same conditions.
Motion to grant with the same conditions. John Frank, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Jim Corkin, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkin?
Yes.
Dan Dupaire?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes. Okay, with those conditions, that petition is granted.
Thank you.
Agenda, I'm not very good at, I'm sorry. Agenda Item Number 3, David and Michelle Mar, Marcus?
Macaruso.
Macaruso, I'm sorry. Care of attorney Arthur D. Frank, 1267 Globe Street, Lot F236. This is a special permit request pursuant to Section 86-424 to change the pre-existing non-conforming use on the first floor, which is a beauty salon, into an appliance repair and retail parts sales office pursuant to, I guess there's no pursuant to, waiving all applicable minimum requirements.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ms. Young, Ms. Alex, for the record, my name is Arthur Frank. I'm a lawyer with address of 209 Bedford Street, Fall River, Massachusetts, and I represent David and Michelle Macaruso, who are sitting to my left. They are the proprietors of Appliance Care Service Company. In earlier times, you may have known it as Jerry's Appliances. It's been a family-owned business for quite some time. They are currently on Plymouth Avenue with a lease, but they would like to become owners. And they signed a purchase and sales agreement for the premises at 1267 Globe Street. As the petition was read, it's, it's a multifamily with a storefront on the first floor, where the owner of the property ran her beauty salon, and she told the Macarusos that she had clientele of 600 people and three chairs. So you can imagine the amount of foot traffic that she probably generated. Mr. and Mrs. Macaruso's business is quite different. They don't sell appliances, they repair them. They have contracts to repair appliances with warranty companies, big box stores. They also do work directly for the manufacturers, and their operation is something like this. Mr. and Mrs. Macaruso are the office staff, and they have four road techs. In the morning, the road techs show up, 8:00, they pick up their work orders, and they're gone for the rest of the day. Mr. and Mrs. Macaruso stagger their time in the office. Occasionally, they may get somebody to call who will ask if they have a part on hand. Maybe they'll get two or three people a day for foot traffic, that's about it. They close at 4:30 in the evening, they're, they open at 8:30 in the morning. I spoke to Mr. Hathaway about parking and loading requirements, and he was satisfied with both what they have on-site and what they have on the street, because you're going to be going from probably a lot of cars parked near the beauty salon to having nobody parked near the beauty salon. So you're going to have a much less intensive use, which I think qualifies under the ordinance. We're going from, from a beauty salon with a lot of people to a appliance repair business that doesn't sell appliances, doesn't have walk-in traffic, with the exception of the occasional person who wants to buy a part or somebody who wants to order a space heater, and when that comes in, they call the client, client goes down and picks it up. So you have a less intrusive use for this neighborhood than what was previously there.
When you say the client goes down and picks it up, picks it up from the site, from the store?
Yeah, somebody would, somebody would come down and Mr. Macaruso would say, yeah, the part's in, person would pull up, go in, pay for the part, and leave. So there's no showroom, there's no, nobody there looking at appliances. He also tells me that he doesn't keep a lot of parts on hand. He's constantly just ordering them as he needs them for the different job sites. So he lines up his, his work orders.
That was going to be my question. Tell me about deliveries, what time of the deliveries did, is it FedEx deliveries? I mean, does a truck pull up and all of a sudden I've got 14 dryers and washers and stuff?
No, no, never appliances, just parts, just parts. So regular FedEx boxes of parts.
Just parts.
Once a day, I get a FedEx delivery and I get a UPS delivery, maybe three times a week would be UPS, but every day FedEx. Usually mid-morning, 10 or 11 o'clock, he's in and out in five minutes.
So, go ahead, ask, no, no, ask the question.
Any combustibles on site?
No.
No.
Just...
It's parts.
We don't do any repairs on site?
Yeah, there's no repairs on site.
So no tools or anything on site?
The techs, the techs go to the...
The appliance repair is the nature of the business, but you're not repairing on-site?
In home.
The four techs?
Correct.
Have all these in their trucks, and they take off, they leave at 8:00 in the morning?
Correct.
And they come back and they load up?
No, they don't, they don't come back the end of the day.
They don't come back?
They're only there once a day.
Yeah.
The only people that are there are Mr. and Mrs. Macaruso, and they close at 4:30. But during...
What are the hours of oper, the hours of 8:30 to 4:30?
Monday through Friday, and then in October through April, they like to open on Saturdays from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon.
October 1st to...
April 1st?
Yes.
9:00 AM to 12:00 noon?
Correct.
Okay. Current signing, whatever signage is there, is it going to get?
We'll just, yeah, we'll, we'll make do with what's there, or, obviously, within the bounds of the, the ordinance, and we'll, we'll show it all to Mr. Hathaway.
Well, I mean, within the ordinance, it's in the R4 district, so I don't think there's a sign, so it's going to be what's there, right?
Yeah.
Okay. The two of you, four trucks, the garage is going to be used for storage, or is it going to be?
Correct.
Storage of?
Parts.
Parts.
Yep.
Okay.
And he also does have that, you can see, there's like a driveway area.
Yeah, no, I, I, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
And I, and I suggested to him that could even be his or his wife's parking spot, or he could, he could reserve it for loading, unloading, whatever he deems best.
Okay. Right, members of the board? I mean, those, allies, members of them, no?
No.
Director of planning, nothing? Okay, is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there, are you in favor or opposed to this?
I just want to ask a few questions.
Yes, will you identify yourself for the record, please, Mr. Piper?
I'm Kenneth Piper, I live next door to this, the beauty shop, 1275 Globe Street. I just want to know, is this going to change the neighborhood in any way, or business go from, is it just one business to another business? It's not going to, you're not going to have, you know, Walmart come in there pretty soon, right?
Well, so, Arthur, you want to answer that?
Certainly.
I'll power back what you just said.
What, what we're going to do, sir, is...
Can you hear me? Can you hear?
What we have is a, an appliance repair service business that doesn't do any repairs on-site. They may get two or three walk-ins on a given day to buy a part, a specific part, if we have the part in, on hand. The techs that do the repairs in your home show up in the morning, they get their work orders, and then they're gone for the rest of the day. They don't come back until the morning. So they're there for possibly 20 minutes in the morning, and then the only people there are Mr. and Mrs. Macaruso, unless, of course, somebody calls and says, do you have a coil for a frigid air refrigerator, model X, X2O? Yeah, we have that coil, can I come down and pick it up? So you're going to have nowhere near as much, as much traffic that the salon generated, and you live there, and I'm sure you could tell us how many, how many...
It wasn't that much, it wasn't that much. It never, it never interfered with our parking at all.
Yeah, we don't...
Like, the upper street is a funeral parlor, that sometimes becomes a problem, but otherwise, no problem.
And I noticed on the, the address, you have 167 and 1261.
12, 12...
1261 is the shop. The beauty shop, where the business is going to be is actually 1261.
Not 12, 127 is the...
1267 is the house.
Well, I, I think that's, 1267 is the address that...
That's what I'm purchasing.
That, that's, that's the property they're purchasing.
They're buying the whole thing.
That's correct.
Correct, with any luck.
And what about the garages on the side, they're going to be used as traffic in? The street garages on the side are not used in?
He's going to use it for his, he's going to use it for his storage.
No vehicles.
The representation is the garages are going to be used for storage of appliance parts.
And it was mentioned a truck is going to park there, what kind of a truck is it?
No.
No, we have, we have UPS trucks that show up and drop off packages.
Just the UPS and FedEx to drop, is what they're saying. His four trucks, that, as I understand it, Arthur, correct me if I'm...
The vans?
There are four, four vans have the appliance parts in them. They will get their orders in the morning where they're going, and they will leave for the day, and they won't come back until the next morning. Is the representation that's being made.
I have a question?
Yes, sir, identify yourself, please.
Detective Teves, I am, I'm here with my mom and dad. I do not live at the property.
Director of voting?
Yes. They live at the property, I do not. I no longer live there, I used to live there.
That's 24 Garfield Street?
Correct.
Yes?
The main question that I have is the trucks that are, the four trucks that are coming, will they be housed there at night?
100% no.
Okay. The other question that I have is the four trucks, they only come once a day, they will not come at 12 and 1 and 2 to pick up more parts or have more jobs?
Not, not those, may I answer?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, not those trucks, but like, as you said, there would, there may be customers coming in at various times of the day, but we've stated how many we perceive is going to be...
And it's four vans, it's nothing like, they're not like, the, like an 18-wheeler or anything's along those sides?
Nope, not at all. And like I said, deliveries, FedEx, and, yeah.
There's plenty of that on the street.
Yeah.
That's what I understand.
No.
What, how, washers, dryers, refrigerators?
All major household appliances. Not mixers and things, big, big appliances.
The garages will not have any of those appliances.
My air conditioner breaks, will I get a special rate?
You know, we, we don't fix air conditioners, but if you take yours over, I'll see what I can do.
Mr. Piper, you can do that outside of the...
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, sir. Thank you for coming out.
Did you add additions to this building, the house?
No, we're not, we're not making any overchanges.
Excuse me, we have a conversation to make.
You have to go to the chair, madam.
Read it, well, tell me, what's your question?
On the, the property, is there, there's going to be changes, obviously, outside, exterior?
No, if he wants, he can, but that's not what's before the board. The only issue that's before the board is the use, the change from the beauty parlor into this appliance repair shop.
And what's the zoning here?
What's the zoning here?
Eight, eight-four?
No, it's an R4.
R4.
R4 district. So what it is, a special permit, we've got something there. The standard for this board is to determine that the new, the new use, deter, we have to determine that it's not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use. So you have this non-conforming use, is this new proposed use not more detrimental than what's there? That's what we have to find.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We're, we're, we're not opposed.
No, it's okay.
I said, you opposed it?
Yeah, we opposed. You object to what you were...
You're, so the Teves family is opposed?
Correct.
To the board granting it, okay. And the Pipers are not opposed? Okay, thank you.
The Pipers are not opposed.
They are not? No. Ken Piper said he was not opposed to the change. Mr. Teves said that he was opposed to it. Okay.
Okay.
Okay? Members of the board, any other questions? I asked who was in favor, who was opposed?
Yes, this is a bifurcated vote.
Well, I, under, under 86-424, all we have to determine is that this new use shall not be substantially more detrimental than the non-existing, to, to the current existing non-conforming use.
Mr. Chairman, I do move that we find that this is not more, or substantially more detrimental than the...
Than the existing non-conform...
Existing non-conforming use of the property.
Okay. So Jim Corkin makes a motion to make a determination by the board that this change is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use. I'll second. Who's that?
Dan.
Dan, Dan Dupaire seconds, okay. Any discussion on the motion among the board? No. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes, okay, so that petition is granted.
Did you take a second, did you take a second vote to, for the special permit?
No, that was the whole thing, the finding and the special permit.
Okay.
But the, I think Jim included the, the hours of operation, eight thirty to four thirty, Monday through Friday.
I, I would suggest that we make it eight, since that's when you indicated your man report, so if we.
Eight o'clock, and then October first, nine to twelve, to April first, nine to twelve.
As a condition.
Those were your conditions, Monday through Friday.
Eight to four.
Very good.
Eight to four thirty.
Eight to four thirty.
Four thirty.
So that was Jim's motion, that's what was approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck to you, sir.
Thank you.
Agenda item number four, B and N Dubois, Realt LLC, attorney Mark Levin, one twelve Bullock Street, lot P twenty-four nineteen, variance request to divide the parcel into two lots, leaving a pre-existing single-family dwelling on Bullock Street, and creating a new lot to construct a single-family dwelling on David Street, waiving area for both lots.
Again, good evening, attorney Mark L Levin.
Excuse me, attorney Levin, excuse me, can you take that outside, please, thank you.
Attorney Mark L Levin, one-three-eight Rock Street, four of the Massachusetts, I am the attorney for B and N Dubois Realt. I'm here tonight with Lori Dubois, her husband and her son behind me, if you have questions. This is an interesting parcel of land that my clients have informed me of. This property has been in Mrs. Dubois's family for many years. Her grandfather was the first occupant of this single-family house that had been a farmhouse, 'cause at one point, this area was farm land in the eighteen hundreds. So that house has been there quite a bit. The, the lot itself is the size of the lot, it fronts on two different streets, it always has been one parcel, it wasn't two pieces where I can ask for division without coming before you. The property, in fact, had been subject, and maybe the board has its records already, back in nineteen ninety-six, my client's parents, Irving and Agnes Gates, requests before this board to divide the property into two separate lots, very similar to what we have here, and to allow the construction of a second lot. That was case number nineteen ninety-two, and the meeting was December nineteenth, nineteen ninety-six, and the board granted that, that variance did get, decision did get recorded, but subsequently, my, one of the owners passed on and eventually didn't do anything. In fact, after the second one passed away, my client inherited this property. She put it into a company just for liability purpose, 'cause concerned about someone falling or anything. So the difference between that variance and today's variance is, that was a little bit lopsided, where they gave more land to one lot than the other. Here, she's making this as least non-conforming as possible by dividing the lots basically in two. The only thing we're asking for a waiver is the square footage, it would require twelve thousand for each lot, you get a little over ten thousand for each. The new house will meet all the requirements by the zoning bylaws, it'll have all the parking that's sufficient under the code, is, will be the house on Bullock Street, the only thing on Bullock Street is that house is a pre-existing and is close to the frontage. Other than that, it meets all the other requirements that would normally be in this district. The only thing we're really asking for is the waiver of the area. You see, they're on two separate streets, David Street, where the new house is proposed, the dead-end street, basically goes up to property, the city of Four River Homes. The, this house, each of these houses are point-two, three-five acres of land. The new house will have coverage of twenty-two percent, the current house, after we divided, will still have just thirteen percent coverage. The, these two lots, as compared to all the other lots in the upbutters, are some of the larger lots in this neighborhood, most of them are smaller, there are two that are larger. So it's not inconsistent for this size lot to exist. Again, if the Agnes and, and the Irving Gates had acted on their variance, we wouldn't be here, 'cause they would've already split this off and sold it, but it isn't, so it's sort of a rehearing, but we're trying to make it as equal as possible to make it not as, as non-conforming as it would be than the twelve thousand square foot lot that you have.
The only variance you need is, is square footage, area, that's it.
That's it.
The proposed lot number one meets in all respects, except for area.
That's correct.
Front, rear, side yard, the building envelope meets it, the front lot, lot number two, nothing changes there, other than the boundary line changes.
That's it. But being this area, it's pretty simple, that this is not gonna be intrusive, giving a variance in this area isn't gonna do anything to harm the neighbors or provide them with any more traffic, obviously, David Street only, if someone comes to the house, it's only two cars coming into the house and coming out, it's not like traffic's going up and down the street, and the current traffic you have for Bullock, for the house that is there already. So it was really not much different, other than building a house.
Both lots have, I see, for the new one, lot number one, you have off-street parking, lot number one, lot number two, the existing, will have off-street parking, yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's see.
I think it has one parking space now.
No, but, but I mean, it has the capability.
Yes, it has plenty of land to put parking in.
Members of the board, any questions on this particular project?
No.
No, okay, is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Motion to grant, motion to deny, what do you want to do, members of the board, have they met the burden for the variance, shape, topography, soil conditions?
I'll move the grant.
Grant by John Frank, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim Corkins, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes, that petition's granted, thank you.
Thank you, have a great evening.
Agenda item number five, Ashley Machado, seventy-nine eighty-one Plain Street, lot M nine twenty-two, special permit request pursuant to eighty-six four twenty-three B, to divide the property into two lots, leaving a single-family dwelling on eighty-one Plain Street and a four-unit dwelling on seventy-nine Plain Street. Good evening, Jeff Tolman, tell us what you'd like to do, identify yourself for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Jeff Tolman from Northeast Engineers and Consultants. Here representing Ashley, Ashley Machado, the petitioner for this special permit application. We filed this application in order to divide the properties under section eighty-six dash forty, four twenty-three B, where we have two existing residential structures on the same property, they've been in existence from around nineteen hundred, plus or minus, based on building apartment records. So, quite simply, what we're looking to do is to, again, divide the property into two parcels, keeping the existing single-family dwelling, number one, eighty-one, Plain Street on lot one, and putting the existing four-family dwelling on lot two, which is number seventy-nine Plain Street. The, the reason the petitioner is going through this exercise is not to sell off the properties, they wanna maintain ownership of the properties. Quite simply, what they're looking to do is take out a residential loan on the property in order to, to do some repairs to the property.
Excuse me, Jeff, Mr. Benedides, can you, can you shut that door for me, please, or tell them to move? Thanks.
So, again, the intent here is to maintain ownership of the properties, but again, what they're looking to do is take out a residential loan against lot one, the existing single-family dwelling, eighty-one, as opposed to the avenue, and take out a commercial loan. So that's why we're here before you, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
The proposed thirteen-by-sixty-foot access easement, that's going, the access easement is for lot number one?
The, yes, that, well, the access easement would be for both lots, to be able to use, part of it would be.
So there's gonna be cross easements for, for the D, for lot one and lot two?
It would be across. Correct, it would be a pedestrian easement, well, actually, it would be a cross easement for both to use, but basically, a pedestrian easement alongside the driveway for lot two, and if need be, a vehicular access for lot one, which I don't believe they would need.
Oh, lot one could possibly park behind the building if they want.
They could create, if they ever decided to, put off-street parking behind the building, they have that option with this easement.
Okay. No fences?
No.
We're gonna put boundary lines, boundary markers in, so we know where the boundaries are? Lot number two's going to have nine off-street parking spaces, according to your plan?
There are, there are already existing nine off-street parking.
That's what I'm saying, so there's nine that they say there will be a minimum, there'll be nine that'll stay.
That, that's correct.
Okay.
Separate utilities are.
Yeah, there'll be, that, if you.
Has to happen.
Yeah, well, the only thing I would ask in this particular case, since the property is not gonna be conveyed, as it is right now, I believe the sewer comes in through, sewer in it, possibly even the water comes in through number eighty-one and that goes to the rear building. If they can maintain that relationship and told, you know, which time one of these properties is sold, and then do the conversion, because basically, what they're looking to do is to, you know, to get money to fix up the buildings.
So I'm not gonna tell you how to practice law, Mr. Tolman, but if we grant the variance, you, you said that you, they wanna maintain it, they have to convey one of the lots out, they have to act on the variance, not just getting the variance and filing a plan. So I, I would suspect that what Mr. Frank is asking is that because he anticipates a conveyance for you to be acting on the variance, that the utility should be separated, I think that's what you, where you were going, John.
Well.
Separate utilities, so we're not now or in the future.
Wired now, by planning, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that was the reason.
So, so that's, I'm just, I'm just making that, because it has to get conveyed, if you don't do it, you're not gonna be acting on the variance, you're not gonna be backing before the board,
but maybe you should get another legal opinion on that. But that's, I understand what you want.
I shouldn't want them to, they're gonna try to fix this place up, and all of a sudden, find out it's gonna cost them twenty thousand dollars to put in a new settlement.
Well, that's the thing, the, the loan that they're taking out would go towards separating the utilities.
Right, that's why I wanna, I didn't know if that was taken into consideration.
Yeah, okay.
I also have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, do Dan, go ahead.
So, from what I saw, there's a wall from eighty-one that actually connects to the house on seventy-nine.
Yeah, that's depicted on the plan.
Right, but you have your boundary line going through there, so.
Yes.
Like, in the event that they do sell it, like, who's gonna maintain the wall, you knock my wall down, you know what I'm saying? The wall belong, obviously belongs to eighty-one, but it connects to seventy-nine.
Well, it would belong to both, I mean, it, it, you know, it's not uncommon to see that, usually, you'll see it across the front of a property, and, and you see walls continue on along a street line or something like that. It's whoever's property the wall is on would be responsible for maintaining.
So when they put in that, see where, see where that bearing of south fifty-five, fifty-seven, fifteen west is, where it crosses the wall, Dan?
Yep.
They're probably gonna put some rebar or a hole in the, so they know that's where it is.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying, what if, that seventy-nine decides they wanna, they wanna take it down, you know what I'm saying, it's.
Yeah, I think seventy, seventy-nine, that's the one in the back.
Yeah.
They, they can take it down, so long as they don't disrupt or damage what's left for eighty-one. Yeah, I don't know how they're gonna do it, but.
Right.
On a piece of paper, I could draw the line and say it's coming down, in reality, I don't know.
It isn't a retaining wall, it's more of a decorative wall for separation of driveway and yard area. So it doesn't really have a structural bearing on the properties, so.
But do you wanna make, do you, if you want, when we're talking about, I think you can say that the wall's gonna come down.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm saying the wall's gonna remain.
Well, the wall's gonna remain, I mean, do whatever you want, but I mean, if, if that's a concern, listen, I don't want them arguing, I don't, I don't want what typically happens and what prompted the, the condition that we've been asking for, for the boundary markers. I don't want the police called and the building inspector called to the site on a Saturday at five o'clock in the afternoon with an argument about where the boundary markers are. So if that's, that's a very real concern, and that it's happened in the city, so if we can alleviate that by either a condition or something, then let's do it. So, that's your, I get it, I think we all heard it, so we can figure something out, Joe, you ready to say something?
Yeah, question regarding parking for lot one currently, where do they park?
On street.
On street?
Yeah.
Exclusively, they're not parking back in the, the four-family area?
No.
Okay. And again, because of the wall, they'd have to take it down if they wanted to park in there, so.
Right.
I thought they may have been parking in the back, since they own the entire property, so.
It, to the best of my knowledge, on street.
Okay, another fistfight, another fistfight and police call, we wanna avoid.
Yeah, no, I don't, I wanna avoid it, I, I wanna avoid those type of, we do the, we grant the variances, and I hear it from the building inspector, that he was called out, because we weren't clear in our decision if we granted it, so if with some way we can prevent it, let's prevent it and put it in, so whoever's buying it, whoever's doing it, knows exactly what's going on. Okay. So, anything else, members of the board on this? Caitlin, no? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay. Members of the board, what do you want to do, grant, deny, conditions? It's a special permit, it's under eighty-six four twenty-three B, do they provide for adequate parking and adequate space and yard? If they have, then, under the special permit, it's not the standard, the same standard as a variance?
Mr. Chairman, I find that they met the qualifications of the section, and that I move that we grant the special permit.
Any, with, with the conditions?
With the condition that the boundary is clearly marked by boundary markers.
Separate utilities, no fencing?
Well, we're letting that wall, it's.
No, we're letting the wall, but how about along that thirteen-by-sixty-foot easement, do we want, we wanna make sure that there's no fences that go up along that line? And on the rear of the property? I'm, I'm asking the question, I mean.
Yeah, I, I think where we have the wall, we have a different condition than, than on others, so it's not a concern if somebody wants to amend the, the motion and add that condition, it's fine, maybe.
Jimmy, you include separate utilities?
Yes.
No, same question.
Separate utilities, okay.
Yeah.
And that's your motion with those conditions, okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, John Frank, discussion on the motion, anybody wanna add anything, discuss the motion? No? Hearing none, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes. Okay, granted with those conditions. Thank you. Karen M. Sebastiano, six thirty-two Tucker Street, lot E eight sixty-six, this is a variance request to divide the existing ten thousand two hundred and fifty square foot lot into two lots, leaving the existing sam, single-family dwelling at six thirty-two Tucker Street on lot one, and B, construct a single-family dwelling on lot two, a new five thousand one hundred twenty-five square foot parcel with fifty-foot frontage on Ludlow Street, waiving side setback requirements in the R eight district.
Good evening, again, for the record, my name's Jeff Tolman from Northeast Engineers and Consultants, here representing Karen Sebastian, the applicant or petitioner for this application for variance for six thirty-two Tucker Street. Quite simply, what we're looking to do here is, we have an unusual-shaped lot, it's a through lot with fifty feet of frontage on both Tucker Street and Ludlow, has just over ten thousand square feet, has ten thousand two hundred and fifty square feet, to be exact, what we're looking to do is divide it right down the middle. Unfortunately, this particular piece of property does not qualify under section eighty-six four twenty-three A for the, excuse me, for the division of a through lot, because this lot originally, when it was originally created off of Tucker Street, was about three hundred and seventy feet deep, it went beyond Ludlow. Ludlow Street was created after Tucker Street sometime, I would say, in between the nineteen twenties, based on my research, and the nineteen fifties. When that street was created, it divided the existing property into two parcels. This parcel that you see before you was one lot, and then there was another parcel on the north side of Ludlow. So what we're looking to do here is, we're looking to divide the property again into the two lots, and create a new five thousand one hundred and twenty square foot lot, which would be lot two. This would be in conformance with the rest of this neighborhood, if you look at this particular block that this sits on, of the thirty-one residential properties, in between Landfall Street, Ludlow, Tucker, and going down to the shopping plaza, twenty of those properties have received variances in the past forty years to do a similar type of division. So what you see before you, here, before you today, would be in conformance with, what has been allowed in the rest of the, the rest of the area. There are only three properties on that block that are conforming, and they're all down closer to the shopping plaza. There are eight properties that are pre-existing, non-conforming, they all tend to be up towards the Landfall Street. And the majority of these properties, between the subject property and, again, going down to the shopping plaza in the middle there, have all received a similar type of variance, so due to the, the shape of the pop, the, the shape of the property, having the frontage on two streets, we have before you tonight in order to get a variance, in order to divide this into two lots.
Okay. But you said, said, an area, so the variances that you need, waiving side setback requirements, area requirements in the R eight district?
Yeah, we are asking for relief.
I just wanna be specific on what the relief, what the variances that you need are.
We are asking for additional relief on the side setback down from fifteen to ten,
Ten.
in order to be able to construct a dwelling on the property.
And frontage, 'cause you only go fifty foot.
Yeah, would be frontage area and, and side setback requirements.
Okay. Okay? Members of the board, any questions? The, so you've got two existing buildings in the back of this, you have an existing outbuilding, and you have the existing shed, those will be raised before?
That is correct, okay, yes.
Okay.
Parking for the new Ludlow Street residents?
Would be provided on-site.
To, to off-street parking, is that what your question is? To, to off-street parking? Is that what your question is?
Yep, yes.
And there's currently parking for Lot Number 1, off-street parking on Tucker Street?
Um, no, there's on-street parking on Tucker. There's a retaining wall along the front of the property. I thought you said off-street. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Lot Number 1 has no off-street parking.
That's correct. I'm sorry, that's correct.
It's got that wall going up. They park in front of the house, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And John, Jim? No, Caitlin, no? Dan, any questions? Anything? Joe?
No.
Ricky?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition?
I just have...
Yes, ma'am, please tell us who you are. Identify yourself, please.
I am Paul Laffontaine. I am the direct abutter to the lot. And I'm not necessarily against the, the application, and I apologize. I do this for a little bit.
No, 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 it's okay. Direct the butter to the north?
I'm on Ludlow Street.
I apologize. The north arrow shown on the plan is incorrect. North is straight up on the plan.
You're on the opposite side?
My major concern is circulation on both of the lots. The Tucker Street side, as you mentioned, there's no on-street parking. The church and the school do create circulation issues. If there's any way they can provide parking on that site, I'm not sure if they can. Currently, they park on our side.
When you say on that site, on Tucker Street?
On Tucker, right to the existing side. And then on the Ludlow Street side, I think you mentioned before, just to ensure that there would be two parking spaces, not garage spaces, but parking spaces.
Two off-street parking spaces.
It's a tight spot for emergency vehicles to get back and forth. So just to make sure the parking is on site. I have a whole different opinion on non-conformities, and it doesn't seem like, you know, I'm not gonna go there. I do think that...
Oh, go, go. No, no, no.
I do this for a little bit. I don't wanna do that too, but my main concern is making it work.
Then we'll talk after the meeting.
To make it work, I'd like to see for both, both sites. My children go to Holy Trinity. I welcome there every day.
Yes.
It can be a very tight intersection, so anything that could be done to alleviate some of that would be great.
That's a great statement, but so now that you've raised it, what, tell me what your proposals are to accommodate that?
I'm not sure if there's any way to create, you know, it would have to, it would be...
Well, I don't know how you're gonna create it on Tucker Street other than say...
Removing the retaining wall and putting in some parking spaces. Or an easement through the back to the site, which is also, it's a tight site.
Which is kind of a tight, yeah, kind of a tight project.
I think we do have a topography issue on the Tucker Street side.
Well, the Tucker Street, yeah. You've got the retaining wall, you've got the topography, and then you've got Ludlow in the back.
There are some sightline issues for sure going down Lambor. It's a hill to that intersection, and you can see that in the morning, the logistics can be a pain.
Okay. Anyone else in favor or any comments, any education for the board? Okay. Members of the board, what do you think? Shape, topography, soil condition, has it met? You've got the singular, you've got the new, single-family home skewed to the front on Tucker Street. You've got this lot going in the back. They need a variance because of square footage and frontage and side yard requirements on the lot Number 2. Is there sufficient hardship with this particular project that warrants a grant of a variance under Section 10? If yes, then we should grant. If no, then we should deny.
I'll make a motion to grant.
Motion to grant, John Frank? Any conditions, off-street parking?
Two off-street parking on the Ludlow, the new lot.
That's it? I mean, it's, in the waiver, no, I just wanna make sure that there's anything else that we...
As written on the plan, the waivers of side yard.
That the buildings, the two existing outbuildings and the shed need to be removed before a building permit is issued.
Uh, yeah, demolition of the two outbuildings.
Okay, so that's John Frank.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Also, uh, property markers. Property markers as well?
Property markers, yeah, okay. Property markers to make sure we have the division. Okay? John, is that okay? All right, so that's John Frank's motion as amended. Do we have a second?
A second.
Joe Pereira, a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
No.
Dan Dupere, no. Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Yes, Chairman Asad, yes. Okay, so the vote is four to one. That petition is granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. I'd like to get your name and telephone. I'm gonna get some more input from you. Thank you.
You sent me an email. I can send you right away.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number seven, Fall River Real Estate Management LLC, 1429 South Main Street, Lot G2656. Special, yeah, special permit request pursuant to 86-445 to waive the requirements for two off-street parking spaces per residential dwelling. The petitioner is proposing to convert the commercial units on the second floor back to two residential dwelling units.
That's correct.
Go ahead.
Again, for the record, Jeff Tolman, Northeast Engineers and Consultants. Here representing Atul Yosi of Fall River Real Estate Management LLC, the owner of the property that's before you for this special permit. The property was recently purchased by the petitioner in the past year. When the, currently, there's an existing commercial use on the first floor, and there's two units on the second floor.
I wanna stop you for one minute.
Yes.
Looking at the assessor's card and knowing that building, I have always thought there were two apartments above that building. And it's been assessed and it's been, on the first floor has been commercial and it's been a two-family.
That's correct.
And I, it was a curve ball to me when I was reading the petition and doing the research.
Likewise. I didn't think I would have to come before you for this particular...
So I'm, I'm wondering if, if the assessors have it wrong or who's got it wrong?
So the building department would not issue a building permit for the renovations on the second floor.
Was the second floor used as commercial? Did the assessors...
It was converted illegally by a previous owner.
Okay. To commercial space. That explains what's going on, because I just couldn't put it together as a preparation.
Yeah, so it's been listed as a mixed-use commercial cross floor.
From 2007 forward. Prior to 2007, it was commercial.
That is correct.
Then you had the split, two, you had the, and I said, I couldn't figure it.
Right. And, and I thought he'd be able to, the petition would be able to go and pull a building permit, but the building department didn't wanna grant the permit until he got relief on the parking requirement. As you can see on the plan, the building basically takes up the whole lot.
Yeah.
Uh, there's no spot for off-street parking on the properties. So quite simply, what we're here before you tonight is, is for a special permit to eliminate the need for parking. For the commercial, I mean, for the...
Residential.
Residential units.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, that's the simple, that's what's here before, yeah. I just wanna get to the section.
So it, it, I'm confused now. So it, it is residential, assessed residential upstairs?
It's been assessed residential since 2007. There's been this two-tier.
Yes.
First floor...
Which is what I, everybody's always assumed, right?
Always assumed. So what Jeff just, what Mr. Tolman just told us was that I guess there was a conversion from the residential to some commercial use upstairs.
Okay.
They wanna do the, the change back, and the building inspector said, here you go. You need relief from the zoning board to get a special permit under 86-445. That says any parking or loading requirement set forth herein may be...
But not to convert back to residential?
Yeah, he's converting it back. He is converting it back to residential.
They don't need relief to go back to residential, is my question.
They do. And, and the reason why they do is because Jeff just confessed that they converted the residential to illegal commercial.
They, they weren't able to pull a building permit for, for doing the renovations on the second floor. For whatever reason, building department would not give him a permit to do it, even though it's listed as a residential or two residential units on the second floor.
Did the illegal conversion offset the zoning?
No, can't.
No, they did. I mean, that's why, that's why I couldn't understand it. But if that's what the building inspector needs for them to get it, because if the, I guess this is the analysis. The building inspector is saying, I don't care what the assessors are doing. You're using it as commercial. Now, if you're bringing it from commercial back to residential, you have to comply with the ordinance with residential off-street parking.
Yeah, but it didn't change its zoning.
It did not?
Yeah, I mean, the zoning was what it was.
But the zoning, but the zoning in the, and I think it's a BL district, isn't it? It's a BL district.
Yeah, so both uses are allowed. The problem is it was converted illegally from the residential to commercial, so.
But that never changed what the zoning, what it was assessed as and what it was originally, correct? So why do we have to, I don't know.
Well, we have, because he came, because he filed his petition, his BA2, for a, for a special permit versus an appeal of the building inspector's decision.
Yeah, they would deny the building permit, so we're here.
No, I understand that, and I, I...
Procedurally, he could have come, appealed the building permit, yeah.
This is, it seems like we're trying to pass something that doesn't need to be passed.
Well, that was my whole, that was my whole point. I couldn't figure out why we were here.
Yeah. Whatever we need to do, I make the motion. Are we ready?
Well, so let me, let me just, so the, the ordinance tells us any parking or loading requirement set forth herein may be reduced or modified upon the issuance of a special permit by the zoning board of appeals if the board finds that the reduction or modification is not inconsistent with public health and safety or that reduction or modification promotes a public health benefit. So it is what it is, so if we have that finding, then we can go and grant the special permit. So, is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay, so if you wanna make, if you wanna make, so we'll do a two, we'll do bifurcated.
You have to bifurcate it.
So do bifurcate it. Have a finding, and then we'll grant if we want a special permit.
I'll make a motion that the...
The reduction or modification is not...
The modification of the existing use is...
Is not inconsistent with public health and safety.
Inconsistent with public health, yeah.
Okay, so that's John's motion.
Less intrusive.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Second, Jim Corkins, any discussion on that finding? Hearing none.
Yes.
Yeah, John Frank, Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman Asad, yes. Second part, do we wanna grant a special permit for it? Because you had the finding, now we're gonna grant special permit. Special permit, John Frank?
Make a motion for a special permit to be the existing use of what it currently is.
What it currently, no, 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 not what it currently is. To, to be converted back to, for residential use on the second floor.
Would it's currently being assessed that, maybe?
What about the waiver of parking, though?
Yeah, that's all it is, is the waiver of parking.
Yeah.
Waiver of parking for the residential use.
So it's not even a question of whether it's residential or not.
Yes.
It's the waiver of parking.
So...
For the residential units.
Yeah.
So are you making the motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to waive the parking requirements for two, for two parking spaces for the residential uses on the second floor.
Okay, so that's Joe Pereira's motion. Any, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Dan Dupere, second?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, Dan. Any discussion on the motion?
Is it a waiver of two spaces or two spaces per unit?
Two spaces per unit.
Two spaces per unit.
So amended.
Two spaces per unit, per the ordinance. Yes, okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman Asad, yes.
Thank you so much.
Number eight, Blount Realty LLC, 630 Current Road, Lot Z0365 and 66. This is a special permit request pursuant to Section 86-389 to waive setback and dimensional requirements in industrial park district so as to construct a 19,382 square foot addition to the existing building. Attorney Paul Laffontaine.
Good evening, Chairman Asad, members of the board, Congresswoman Ms. Young. For the record, Attorney Thomas Kornett walks us at 350 North Main Street, Fall River, Massachusetts. I represent the applicant, Blount Realty LLC. With me tonight is John Kavanaugh, who's the Director of Imaginering for Blount. Nigel McGinn, who is the Senior VP of Operations, and Mike Faisendola from Level Design, who did the site plans. I do see that the board has some site plans spread out in front of you. I do have a slightly amended version of the site plan that I'll give to you, but I think it might be easier if you walk through there. I think the changes are going to be very minimal, even if the board wanted to keep those in front of them, or I can certainly pass out some new ones if the board would like.
Cut to your presentation.
All right, thank you. We're here before you tonight looking for a special permit. As the board may recall, I think some of you were here for this. We were before you in 2020 for the addition of about a 19...
February 21st, 2019.
2019, even longer than I thought. So 2019, for an addition along Graham Road of the existing building. This chiller addition here.
Right.
We sought relief at that time. With the overhang, we anticipated being within 1.7 feet of the street layout. As constructed, I think we're 3.5 feet away at its closest point. Fortunately for Blount Fine Foods, business has been booming, as they say, over the past few years. They have significant demand and they need to increase their operations. They do have other production facilities in the country, but Fall River is their nationwide headquarters. They certainly want to keep Fall River as their nationwide headquarters, so they're looking to expand their operations here. There are two additions that are proposed. This here is a maintenance addition, which is slightly over 4,000 square feet. This is not what we're seeking relief for. I'm just bringing it to the board's attention, because this is also an addition that's going to be constructed. The addition that's, we're here before you is here. It's 19,100 square feet. It runs flush up against the chiller addition that was constructed approximately two to three years ago. It runs along the face of their building. Again, they're gonna maintain that same setback, remaining about 3.5 feet away from the road layout. You can see there's a grass and landscape area that's approximately 20 feet wide. So if you were actually to go out to the property and see what's actually constructed on the ground, that chiller addition that was constructed isn't gonna look like it's three and a half feet off of the roadway. It's three and a half feet off of the road layout, but a good 23 feet or so away from the actual pavement. So we're effectively coming before the board, looking for the same type of relief. Again, being able to construct an addition and keep it 3.5 feet away from the road layout.
Consistent with the chiller. It's going to be in that same line.
Same line.
With the chiller, so we're not changing anything. We're just going, we're heading where it is.
Exactly. It's really gonna square off the building.
Square off the building and that's it, connected to the chiller.
A question that possibly could be posed is, well, can you construct this somewhere else? Because of the way the plant has designed and evolved over the years, this production facility has to be conducted, excuse me, constructed here in order for the internal workings that have already been constructed.
That's the same issue that came up with the chiller.
Same issue that came...
Where it is, where it is, how the production line goes, and it needs to be there.
You seem to remember from last time, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I was expecting that you were gonna do that the last time, so you wouldn't be back here this time.
Well, they, they didn't think they were gonna need this type of capacity back in 2019, or I'm sure we would ask for all of that relief back then. Again, fortunately, Blount has the demand, and they wanna be able to meet their demand.
It was just, it's just that. The, the other piece that showed up on the original plan, that two-story office, that's already existing.
That's the, that's...
That's there, I mean...
That's correct.
Yeah, no, the, the thing, the thing off to the side, yeah.
Yes, that's...
Somehow emboldened highlighted, because when I drove by and looked, I said, I'm missing something, but I think it's there.
That's there. I believe when that was constructed, some relief was needed at that time as well.
And the proposed addition, we're inside, is, you don't need relief there. All you need is for this proposed addition next to the chiller.
That's correct. That's correct. So just by way of background for Blount, currently they have 1,100 employees, spread out through three shifts.
God, you can have your public service announced. God, tell us all.
Thank you, thank you. They anticipate that this will have a minimum of another 50 employees. They hope eventually more once they get it up and, and fully running. So I mean, they'll be closing in on 1,200 employees by the time this is done. They're gonna be making several million dollar investment in this addition. Like I said before, this is where Blount's headquarters are. They wanna stay here. They think they've been good corporate tenants to this, to the city, and we respectfully request the relief granted. I know this particular special permit provision, I, the wording is, is a little unusual. I think this was pointed out by the chairman when we were here last time. It specifically states this is 86-389.
Yeah, but it's in the overlay district, and you know, today, you made me map the thing out until I figured out how to use the interactive plan. And then I got, because I said, no, Tommy, it's not, I'm gonna call him. And then Caitlin, who said, no, no, look at this, and I said, ah, ah, I don't have to map it out, but I had the maps out and I was...
Thank God for Ms. Young, then.
Thank God, because let me tell you, three hours later, here I am.
Should've made the phone call first.
It was gonna be to you and say, Tommy, what the hell are you doing?
Well, I rely on the engineer, so I would've asked. So it specifically states that the Board of Appeals shall, after public hearing, grant the permit for the following uses unless such use would be detrimental to the research and overlay development district and would not be in the best interest of the city. Respectfully, I don't think that this proposed addition would be a detriment at all to the specific district and certainly not to the city as a whole.
And this does not reduce any parking whatsoever, right?
It does not reduce parking. One of the things that we anticipate may be part of the discussion when we go for site plan review is there is parking that goes on in some of these grassed area here. There's recently been a parking area here that's, this area here is owned by... Right, I was talking about that last night. That's been brought online. It's been repaved, dressed up. There's a walkway. There's a covered bus stop to promote...
Public transportation.
To promote public transportation. To promote public transportation. So Blount is going to be notifying all their employees that have been parking along that grassy area, that that is no longer permitted. Some of the areas where they may park is where this addition is going to be going. So they're all going to be relocated to that designated parking area. But we're not losing any designated parking spots based on prior layouts.
Question?
Okay. Board members, any other questions? Ricky?
No.
Joe?
No, sir.
Dan?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here, what? Yeah, I know you guys are in favor. Is there anyone opposed to this petition? Skolius, identify yourself. Please tell us your concerns about this project.
I will, thank you.
Please, come on down.
Yeah. Still, we had a chat. Yep, we just had a pre-meeting chat, so I, I think we're somewhere, but let me give you my, I, I have a couple things to hand out that you can look at.
So give us a...
They're all, I'll give you my name.
Please, and address.
And George Kolius from, and I'm representing, in a sense, C-Fox LLC at 1375 Airport Road, who are abutters and were notified of the variance request. Let me just give you the rest of these.
Go ahead, do your hands up.
Yeah, just, just so you can see it from a different form. See, that's, that's the spot right there. That's the, I just took it, there's an area of the spot that wants to get filled in.
George, you're, you're, you're representing the people to the north?
They are to the northwest, right here. Again, that's a good thing.
Across the street?
Right there, on this corner, right here. That's, that's the corner they want to fill in, that's what we're, that's my, that's where C-Fox is. They're building a new building there right now, they've owned it for about 10 years. Here it is right here, counsel, I mean, right here. See, here's what they want to fill in, here's where C-Fox is.
Okay.
They wiped out all the, most of the trees there, and they're putting a, a building there. And so they're building within, you know, they're starting out within the bounds and within the regulations and the setbacks and everything, is 15,000 square feet on three and a half acres. So I'm ahead of myself, but we're putting 19,000 square feet on whatever that is, covered. So it brings you to, and I guess I'll be, I guess I'll be a little bit off, I know I don't have a lot of time, but you know, lot coverage ratio... How would you talk, talk to it? Yeah, lot coverage ratios are always important. I'm not usually a complainer, or as you know, or a whiner, and I, and I know that rules are made to keep people from complaining, because then if you follow the rule, you don't have anything to complain about. But if you want to change the rule, that's why you notify everybody, so that we can, if you, if somebody is interested, like in a butter or a neighbor, they can say what their issue is. Now, and we're talking about setbacks, I think, and in, whether it's residential, commercial, or industrial, the reasons that you have these setbacks in place are, they, they apply equally to all three types of real estate for the most part, and you all know this, but better services, space between the properties ensures, you know, fire and response and all that other stuff, better ventilation, and here's where you have a problem. You know, in a neighborhood, it means clean air, it means not, not, that probably, I see, too, the roadways can give you cleaner air. In this case, it's the same with odors that come in industrial areas, maybe even a little worse, and of course, Blount isn't immune from emitting odors with the product that they have, and we're, we're aware of that, we're not having a problem with that, but it's just something you have to consider. Lighting and insulation, sound insulation, they call it, and of course landscaping. And I talked about lot coverage ratios, and then we're not really sure what's, what's in this proposed addition. My guys are a little concerned about freezers, what is it in there? And that brings me to, I talked to Tom Klaran about this. It's fine to get a notice, but if you really want to be successful, and they haven't had to do this in the two previous ones, you might reach out to the neighbor and see if they have any problem with what you're planning to do. And my, and my guys didn't get a call from the Blount company at all, so we object to this addition. And I guess the, you've got now, you've got now a building, and if you look, every, pretty much every bit of land on it is going to be covered. And I can show you, you can see that on the pictures I showed you. It drops off pretty substantially after the last addition that they had. I think this shows, is this the one with the, it drops off?
Yes, you see it in the last bit.
Yeah, this, yeah, this was the latest addition right here, and they fixed this up, but this all here is 20 feet down on the edge, it's all 20 feet, so they're not going to go any further there. And, and you're going to just bring the building right up against, they talked about two and a half feet, or three and a half feet from the, from the layout, and that leaves a little bit. But then you get to, the other concern you can bring up is, a lot of people walk that street, they go around that block. I've been out there a bunch of times, and there's a lot of walkers at lunch. So now you've got a building right up against the street, something to consider for travel and visibility. And then you brought up parking. I was up there, and there are, they are doing well, there, there are a lot of cars, they do need some parking. Blount does own another piece of land over here, I don't know what their plans are for that, but that could be a parking lot. But this here is an active, I think they have overhead doors there, do they have, do they have doors? Is there a...
Through me, George, what do you want to know?
Sorry, I think there are, I think there are, anyway, it's very active there with, with traffic, that spot.
It's an industrial site, go ahead.
Yeah. So they cover that up, I don't know where that...
Well, I want to ask the question, you're raising a percentage of coverage, so I'm going to defer.
Yeah, lot coverage, yeah.
I'm going to defer. Did somebody do the calculation on what the lot coverage is with this addition? Does it bring it beyond the 80%?
80%? No. The lot in question is 15 and a half acres, or 67, 677,000 square feet, plus or minus.
No, that was, that's why I'm asking the question, am I missing something in terms of the deed?
No, the existing building is 284,173 square feet. The two total additions that are being constructed, one of which we need relief for, combined are roughly 23,000 square feet. So you'll be over, slightly over 300,000 square feet for the building area. There's 677,000 square feet for the actual lot. I can continue to speak on that.
No, no, I just asked the question because my, my rough calculations based on, just because I was concerned about that, I mean, it was, it was negligible, it wasn't...
Right.
Approaching the, so I'm listening to, unless I missed something in my calculation, or Mr. Kolius is telling me that I'm missing something, I don't think that was really a consideration. The singular issue was the, the relief that's required for that rectangular piece approaching the roadway.
I didn't, I didn't specifically address lot coverage in my presentation, again, I think, as you stated.
No, no, but I think, but they...
Because it's so, we're so far away from what the requirements are on that. And looking at the aerial photographs that, that Mr. Kolius handed out, I, I don't respectfully, I can't agree with him in saying that this lot is nearly covered by this proposed addition. If you can see, there is substantial green area.
No, no, but that's what, what I'm saying is, that was one of my original concerns, until I looked at the deed, and I looked at the lot itself, it was...
But this addition would be going here.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
It's, it's a kind of a gravelled area right now. Mr. Kolius is correct, there are, I believe, three overhead doors in that area on the proposed addition. Because they will be losing those three overhead doors, they will have like one garage door that a vehicle can drive in and out of, so there's actually going to be a reduction in the amount of what I'd call truck traffic going to and from that particular area.
But it's an industrial site, it's not in a, it's not in a neighborhood.
I, I agree. I'm just trying to address Mr. Kolius's concerns.
No, no, but I'm, I'm just trying to get my, my head just around what, it's one thing if it was in the middle of a single-family residential neighborhood, but it's an industrial site.
Right.
You got to go up there, it's very active, and, and, yeah, do you...
I was there.
There's trucks, I mean, it's a...
I was kind of happy that there was lots of stuff happening.
Lot of stuff, God bless them, but in back here, they roll the trucks in, there's signs pointing to which parking lot you got to go, it's great, I mean, don't get me wrong, I know they do a good business, but, and run a business, but if you say, you know, you're going to come into the driveway, I don't know what kind of truck or whatever it is, but it's...
Stop. This is the zoning board of appeals, there is a very limited issue that's before the board.
So I, I'll give up on that.
No, no, I'm not telling you to give up, but I'm saying, you're taking me down a path that's really beyond...
Thank you for letting me know, I, I don't, I don't want to go down any path that I shouldn't. And I brought up lot coverage, I only thought, I wasn't aware of the percent, I wasn't aware of the percentage of this, and, and I don't know whether, how much wetland, if it comes in or not, but this, if this is all, if they could build on this part, it's about 20 feet down from there. So why not build that way? Instead of going on the, you know, the easy route right on the flat here, and having to get...
Well, I'll let Mr. Klaran, I think they've already answered that question.
Yeah, I know.
But, but listen...
For business, no, I heard him, for their, for the business, right? In other words...
No, I guess how it's laid out, how the whole manufacturing...
There's, there's two reasons. One, how it's, how the existing processing plant's already laid out.
I mean, the zoning board, George...
I heard that.
No, we hadn't, I have not gone, and I can't speak for any of the members of the board, go ahead and see their, how they actually do their thing, but when we granted the last variance for the cooler, it had to do with the whole production line and the, how they did it, and this is a continuation of that.
But we also, Mr. Chairman, there's wetlands here, and on previous developments, there's already been some fill over here, and they cannot fill anymore.
Fill anymore.
So they cannot expand out in, in that direction, and if they did expand in that direction, it would actually be closer to Mr. Kolius's client. Where this addition is being constructed is on this, I believe it's the west Philly side, I believe Mr. Kolius's client is, is down in this area here.
Correct.
So he's really on the other side of the building from where this addition is being constructed. And as far as overall traffic, and I think, again, I don't want to belabor the point, I think, Mr. Chairman, this is an industrial site, they do have a fair amount of traffic, there are trucks that come in and out of there, they have a lot of employees. Respectfully, I, I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, one minute, sir, but let me, but Mr. Kolius has the floor, I just wanted to make sure...
Yeah, no, and I appreciate all that, you're getting that straightened out. The, so if, does the wetland count in your lot coverage ratio? Do you have a percentage of wetland against the 600, or it's the whole thing?
Well, lot coverage is lot coverage, this is what I've got, how much is being covered.
Right, they don't mine itself for wetland and stuff like that, so...
No, I was going to defer to the planner, but I'm, I'm answering, but she's saying, no, she's, she's saying no, I'm saying no, but anyway, go ahead, continue.
Yeah, okay, so you, and it's impractical then, or unavailable to build on that part of the north, the north part of, northwest, northeast part of the, of the lot. So it is the only part left, so they should have covered it last time, and like you said, why didn't you come in, you know, in 2019 and ask for the whole thing?
So, but under, under our ordinance...
C-Fox woke up. Yeah, go ahead.
Under our ordinance, in 86-389, which Mr. Klaran referenced as part of his petition, in a specific case, the Board of Appeals, and it's not may, it says the use of the word is shall, after a public hearing, grant a permit for the following uses unless, in the opinion of the board, such use would be detrimental to the research and development overlay district, and would not be in the best interest of the city. So that's really the standard that the board has to go to see whether or not we're going to grant the special permit, which is not the standard of a variance directing us that we should do it unless we determine that it's going to be detrimental to the, it's not in the best interest of the city. So we're listening to what Mr. Klaran and his clients have presented, I'm listening, I am, and I think the rest of the board is listening to your presentation about why you're objecting to it, but we really don't have a, a very wide avenue or lots of latitude to say, no, it's not in the best interest of the city. I mean, I'm listening to you, I'm taking into consider, I'm taking, and I can't speak for the rest of the board, the issue that you're making about how big the building is, but then when I overlaid the size of their lot with the entire building, I wasn't coming close to the maximum lot coverage, that didn't even enter into my analysis before presentation this evening.
Yeah.
But, keep going.
Well, I mean...
No, I want you to air, no, I want you to air things that, that are concerned for your client, because maybe your client, and maybe you and Mr. Klaran need to talk to see if there's some issue that can get resolved, but the board has to make a determination for Mr. Klaran this evening.
Well, that's, I, I mentioned that, Mr. Klaran, and thought that maybe we could...
I got it.
And I'm, I'm happy to continue the conversation with Mr. Kolius or his client after tonight's meeting.
Go ahead, what else, George, you've got a list, go, go through it.
No, that's it, I just see, I, it just seems, yeah, no, it, we're not talking about variants or setbacks, we're talking about a special permit.
Yes, correct.
And you have your two, two rule, two, two things to, to consider.
That's it.
Right? So I guess my objection stands, that you're filling in...
Yeah, I, I got it, you, well, you got, you got five, six people listening to it, I mean, I, I'm only one guy.
Yeah, I, I understand, and, and, but I've been directing my attention to you.
You have to know, it has to come through me.
Yeah, and...
Otherwise, we'd have chaos.
And...
Even more. Even more chaos, yeah.
Yeah, so...
Okay.
We'll see, yeah, that's good, that's fine, yeah. I mean...
Comment.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I just give the updated lands' facts?
Are those the new?
Yes.
Now, what, tell me what the change was from what we were looking at.
So I, I think...
I mean, you're, you're giving it, you're giving it to us at the last minute, but I just want to know what the change was.
It didn't have this, this bay door out here, and I believe it had it about 1.8 feet away from the, you know, the layout.
Originally had 1.8, now it's got 3.5.
Correct. And the, the building itself, now, the addition is 19,100, and it was 19,380. So it went down by 280 square feet, it came back about two inches or so away from the, It came back about two inches or so away from the, from the road layout and added that bay door. That's, that's the difference.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Not one of, I think it was one of your clients.
Yeah, I guess the last thing I missed was, now that, thank you for letting me read my notes here. I don't have my glasses today. But, um, uh.
You want my glasses too?
The next, I was gonna ask you. But the next, the next petitioner that comes in would say a special permit that wants to come right up three and a half feet from the layout.
Well, if it's in, if it's in the overlay district, it is something to consider. So if your client is thinking, I wanna build right up to it, then I guess he's gonna come with a special permit. He's probably gonna hire attorney Klorin, and they're gonna come and they.
Right. For the next building that he might need or want, because.
If it's a vacant piece of property, it's a different story than an existing ongoing production facility.
Yeah. Well, no, what about for the, is this the new building he's gonna have? Then he wants to expand like.
I can't answer, we're not going to do hypotheticals. This is the real problem.
But they can use that, can't they use this, if you, if it goes against?
No, what we do here is not precedent setting. It's not precedent. Every case is on its own merits. So what we do here tonight, you can't say you granted it to this guy.
Okay. That's what you learn. That's what I missed in that in law school, right? Thank you.
Okay.
Kept some secrets.
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. I also, thank you so very much for telling me that we got some in favor. Oh, will you read it, please?
Of course. Brought my best reading voice.
Thank you, you too.
All right, we did receive a letter of correspondence, March tenth, twenty twenty-two, from Michael Bisco, Twenty Development Street, Fall River, Massachusetts, zero two seven two one, dated March eighth. Dear Chairman Assad, this letter is tendered in support of the above-captured petition regarding Blount Realty LLC. Blount was an excellent addition to the industrial park, and the city ought to support its expansion plans. We are a direct-to-butter and know firsthand the care and attention Todd Blount takes with his company's property. This addition will enhance it while at the same time increase its business potential. We hope that the ZBA looks favorable upon the petition and grants the relief Blount needs to continue their successful operation in Fall River. Very truly yours, Michael Bisco, Jr.
Is that the only correspondence we got on this?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there anyone else in favor, anyone else opposed to this petition? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval, or I move that we find that it is not more detrimental.
So under eighty-six, three eighty-three, you're making, you're making the determination or the finding that in opinion of the board, such use would not be detrimental to the research and development overlay district and would be in the best interest of the city.
That's correct. Yeah, and in accordance with revised plans, as submitted this evening.
Okay, so that's Jim Corkins' motion. I'll second. Who is that, Joe?
Nope.
Dan?
Dan.
Dan, you know, I'm gonna separate you two. You guys twice sound too much alike.
We don't sound anything alike.
Well, come over here. Dan Dupair, okay, second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. John Frank.
Yes.
Jim Corkins.
Yes.
Dan Dupaire.
Yes.
Joe Pereira.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it's a little different. Chairman Assad, yes. Okay, so that special permit is granted. Thank you, Attorney Klorin. Thank you, Mr. Colias.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klorin. Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item number nine. So let me go to confession. This is, this is something I can't listen to, so Vice Chair Joe Pereira is going to have to chair it. But I was the instigator for bringing this before the board. Ricky Sahady's gonna listen to it. And I'll bring one other thing to the board's attention before I depart, unless. Christine's going to do it. The moratorium on Purchase Street is not twenty twenty-six, it's two thousand and twenty-four. And I'll step up.
Yeah, my friend.
This is Marino Benavides.
Good evening.
Item number nine.
Item number nine on our agenda. One fifty-fourth Street Trust, Carol Marino, Zachary Benavides, trustee, under one forty, uh, this is for one forty-six, one forty-eight Purchase Street lots in oh eight, forty-eight, and forty-nine. A request for finding and determination that condition number two of the decision of ZBA issued on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one should be modified. With that, there's a letter from the trust dated March seventh, twenty twenty-two. Gentlemen, persons who went to Massachusetts General Lodge, Chapter Forty-A, Section fourteen, I hereby request that the zoning board of appeal exercise the power granted therein to modify the decision of July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one by extending the time for the separation of all utilities and recording the affidavit with this, with the Fall River District Registry of Deeds from prior to sale and/or transfer of the property, but no later than one year from the date of the grant of variance to within sixty days of the actual separation of all utilities or one hundred and twenty days after the grant of permission from the city of Fall River, uh, city, Fall River City Council to.
Excavate.
Excavate, sorry, Purchase Street, but not, not later than sixty days after the moratorium on the excavating Purchase Street, whatever is earliest to occur. Should I read that again? That section. So the original, the original ruling was. Ah.
I'm sorry.
Nope. It's not. You lied to me. I finally sit here and you lie to me.
Now you know.
So, yeah, now I know. So originally, it said that the separation of utilities and the recording of the affidavit had to be, quote, "prior to the sale and/or transfer of the property, but no later than one year from the date of the grant of variance," which would mean July of this year. And change that to "within sixty days of actual separation of all utilities or one hundred and twenty days after the grant of permission from the city, from the Fall River City Council to excavate Purchase Street, but not later than sixty days after the moratorium on excavating Purchase Street, whichever is earliest to occur." What do we know about the moratorium on Purchase Street?
So there's a.
Just did it, that was part of the escapes.
There, there's a, it's part of the five years.
Right.
Streets that are paved within the last five years can't be excavated until the moratorium is lifted. The moratorium will be lifted, I believe he said, twenty twenty-four. Yeah, so not twenty twenty-six.
Unless you go to the city council and request it, right?
Right.
So that's what, that's what they're saying.
Right. Either with.
So we deny it. They're gonna go to city council and they could put in a request, correct?
Correct.
Right. Not saying we're gonna, just.
Yeah, because we can't.
If it's left as is.
We can't touch the excavation of the street. That's outside, way outside of our project.
The city council.
I'm just trying to understand exactly what we're looking for. So within sixty days of the separation of all utilities or one hundred and twenty days after the grant of permission from the Fall River City Council to excavate Purchase Street, which could, could be in twenty twenty-four.
Come on, they put it on the agenda for, for next, if they put it on next month's agenda and city council grants it, then they can turn around and excavate the street. Otherwise, they have to wait until after, and that's.
And the city council has been fairly re-concentred against any further.
Right, well, that's why they.
So that's why they say, but not more than sixty days after the moratorium is lifted.
So if we don't grant it, they, they, they wouldn't be able to go ahead 'cause the city council, chances are, just, we'll say no, so we'll come back again. If you'd said no.
Right.
Or if you said no based on the fact that you think the city council's gonna do it, yeah.
Can we hear from you? Do you intend to take this matter to the city council?
No, I was just ready to, the engineer marked everything, was ready to cut, to separate the sewers, but he said they got in the street. That's, you have to come for you guys to okay it. I just wanna be able to close on a property, 'cause right now it's vacant. It's don't, you know, vandalism and all kinds of, and I have a vacant piece of property that's put. Highland Preservation is the one that's buying the property, and they're ready to close. I've been ready to close in for two, two months.
So a closing is pending.
Yeah, as soon as you guys say okay. And I'm one of that engineer that you have the invoice there, so I'm gonna put the money on escrow.
Corey, yeah.
They're gonna hold it for when you guys, whenever. And Highland Preservation is looking to buy the front property anyway, which is both tied into it. They just looked at it today, so. I just need to close on the property. And I also, the lot, the duplex lot, they're gonna wanna come up, to come to open the street 'cause they're gonna build a duplex there.
So my, my concern then is that if you're closing on the property, there's still sewer tie-in going through there?
Yep.
And that would then remain?
Yeah, we're just gonna have to work somehow with the buyer for the duplex. So, you know, we're just gonna get, to get along until we get this taken care of. I just need to close on the property. I have a vacant piece of property.
You don't have to go on the deed, right?
Hmm?
You don't have to go on the purchase and sales of the deed.
Has to go on the purchase and sale agreement.
Special condition.
Yeah, which again, he's looking to buy the front one anyway. So he's gonna own it all.
Right now, on that purchase and sales agreement, is our decision from July. It should be, if it's recorded. So that's gonna show up, that's gonna show up in the chain of title. But in this case, on your purchase and sale agreement, you have to make this disclosure regarding the, regarding the conditions.
Can we hear from the planner?
Yeah.
I think if you condition it in the way you discussed, it's appropriate, so.
Yeah, I hate to see somebody's tied up because of the fact that they can't do what they've got to do.
Yeah, it's a catch twenty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah, the engineer's already marked everything, the gas lines, everything. He's ready to dig up, this was all new to me.
It's a good thing he didn't start.
I said, oh, snap.
And I will say, I believe there's been discussion with the city engineer regarding this, and he's.
That new guy?
Yeah. Yeah, you know, our good friend who isn't here tonight.
So we need to approve a year ex, I'm sorry.
So we would be.
The conditions that are on there, a hundred and twenty days after.
We would modify the existing conditions, which are pretty standard as far as what we've always done. And the new condition would be that the separation of utilities and the recorded affidavit would be within sixty days of actual separation of all utilities or one hundred and twenty days after the grant of permission from the Fall River City Council to excavate Purchase Street, but no later than sixty days after the moratorium on excavating Purchase Street. So this gets a little bumpy. If you look at the last part first, sixty days after the moratorium passes, what you're saying is you get a permit and get right in there and get it done. Get the separation done. That would be your trickiest one. All right, so you could be sitting there, you know, in, in twenty twenty-four, knowing that the moratorium just ended and having to fight your way into the street because you can't get the permit to cut it. So keep that in mind, that that, you know, that could end up burning you with that, that sixty-day period. I mean, it's a little convoluted.
Make it longer.
Now, the.
Yeah, make it longer. What he said.
Make it longer.
Who said that?
Was that the ghost?
Is that you, God?
The ghost of Christmas past.
I'd say take that sixty days and make it a hundred and twenty days. I agree with the ghost. Just because I know, I know how permitting goes, that's all. You get bogged down for whatever reason.
Yeah, it could be the weather, it could be the middle of winter.
Yeah, because weather, seasonality, sixty days is a pretty.
Now, that, that separation is totally a local zoning board regulation. It's not in statute.
Correct.
So we do have the complete ability to amend it at will.
Just gonna have to work with the buyer. Again, he's buying the pro.
It's to avoid problems down the road. That's, that's, that's why we always do it. So there's no, no hassle down the line. Some of the sewer line breaks, somebody caves it in, who's gonna fix it, et cetera. You're gonna have to put that in your purchase and sale, with purchase and sale, we're already bought. You're gonna have to make a disclosure about it.
On the deed, yeah.
Yeah. So if that's the case, and I will hand this to anybody who wants to make this motion.
Well, I move that we move as, or move the approval as requested with a modification of condition number one, changing from sixty days to a hundred and twenty days.
So our modification, we would, you're, you're saying that we will modify the decision issued by this board on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, which I really wish we had the case.
Which was a point of clarification, that's condition two.
Pardon?
The, the determination that we made was a condition two, but you're saying condition one on.
Well, condition one on the new.
Right.
Yeah.
So that would then change it, this should go to a hundred and twenty days as well. That the recording, that the separation and the recording of an affidavit of the separation to be within one hundred and twenty days of the separation of all utilities or one hundred and twenty days after the grant of permission from the Fall River City Council to execute Purchase, uh, to execute, I'm sorry, excavate Purchase Street, but no later than one hundred and twenty days after the moratorium on excavating Purchase Street, whichever is earliest to occur.
I'll second.
You can read it right off of that.
That's a motion.
That's a motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right, can I just read that to clarify?
Yeah, please.
All right, so it's gonna be a hundred, the, the modification to condition two, as it stood on the July fifteenth decision, we're modifying to one hundred and twenty days that they have to excavate and record. It'll either be a hundred and twenty days if the city grants special approval, city council grants special approval, or a hundred and twenty day, no later than a hundred and twenty days post-moratorium.
Correct.
Got it.
Correct? That's what, yes, good.
Okay, you agree? Any discussion? Well, I.
I second that.
Go ahead, John.
It says, "within sixty days of actual separation of all utilities or a hundred and twenty days after special permission, or no later than sixty days." There's three things.
Yeah.
Not two, so I wanna make sure.
That's correct. And we, we took, we took the sixty, we took the sixty after the moratorium and made it one twenty, just in case they can't get the permit. What if the moratorium's listed in the, in the middle of December and they don't, the city says don't cut it open?
There's three things. The first one says, "within sixty days." Is that what we originally had?
Yeah. I, I think it's because originally it was presumed that you could go right ahead and dig into the street, and so your sixty days was given to record. You had to excavate and then record within sixty days. So that, you really can't do this right now because you just can't go out there and excavate.
And we can't separate the.
There's only two dates, two timeframes that we have to address. That's what I wanna make sure, 'cause there's three on here, and I don't want us to be longer.
Nope, we don't wanna be longer. Any other discussion on the matter?
Mr. Chairman, just one, one thing. Um, Caitlin, you did say you discussed it with the city engineer. What was his opinion?
So I think he actually may have, like, worked with the applicant on this proposal. That's what I think the letter states. So I think it was just trying to figure out a way to make, to allow us to proceed, really.
Yeah, I just wanna close, put the money on here, and let them do whatever they wanna do, whatever you guys say. Go ahead.